Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is 9:00 AM and the livestream and recording has begun. You may begin your meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. I see that we indeed have quorum. I call this meeting into session. This is council of this committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, November 27th, 2024. At this time, I would like to read the land acknowledgement statement, and that privilege is mine today. And before I even begin, I apologize to the groups. Anyway, the Town of Pelham is situated on treaty land steeped in the rich history of the First Nations such as the Hattie-Wandarank, Hodenoshina, and the Anish-Enai Bay, including the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation. This territory is covered by the upper Canada treaties and is protected by the Dish with One Spoon Wampum Agreement. Today, many First Nations, Metis, and Inuit people from across Turtle Island live and work in Niagara. Town of Pelham stands solidarity with all indigenous peoples, past and present, and acknowledging that our high standard of living is a result of the resources and lasting friendship of the indigenous peoples. Thank you. I turn to the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion put forth by Councilor Niznik that the agenda for the November 27th, 2024 special meeting of committee be adopted. Do you, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. After reviewing the agenda, any questions? Not seeing any, I call the question. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries to the clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That brings you to item four, disclosure of pecuniary interests.
Thank you. After viewing the agenda, does any council member have a pecuniary interest in general nature thereof to declare? Not seeing any, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that brings us to our first presentation this morning. We are joined by Julie Andrews, CEO of the Lincoln Pelham Public Library, and Ms. Andrews is joining us virtually this morning.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews, you have the floor.
Good morning. Thank you very much. It's nice to be with you all this morning. And thank you very, very much to you, Mayor Duncan, staff and council for this opportunity to present Lincoln Pelham Public Library's 2025 draft operating budget. May I have the next slide, please? I can't see the slide, so I'll just assume that it's gone.
No, it's okay. We're just queuing it up for you just a moment.
Okay, sure. Thank you. May I have the next slide, please? Great. Our new strategic plan has been launched, and our mission and vision are listed here. Next slide, please. We have been working on the various goals set out in the plan, and are preparing to launch our bookmobile service. We listen to the communities, and we respond with collections and programs that meet their needs. Next slide, please. Lincoln Pelham Public Library is an essential social service. We are a dynamic gathering place for innovation, equity, and opportunity that enriches and improves the lives of everyone in our communities. Residents have come to rely on our indispensable and free materials, our spaces and services to more confidently navigate in this complicated world. LPPL enhances literacy skills ranging from reading to finances to cooking, supports digital equity, fosters a sense of belonging and social inclusion, facilitates community connections, supports academic and career success, and more. Several years of concerted work and outreach have led to steady increases in our program attendance, circulations, new members and library visits. We are thrilled to be building connections with our new strategic plan and working with many community partners to expand our reach. These statistics are a clear measure of the success of our work year over year. So these statistics represent the end of Q3 for 2024 versus the end of Q3 for 2023. And you can see that our visits have increased 22%, our circulation a remarkable 33%, and our program attendance 11%. Next slide, please. These are a few highlights of what's shaping up to be a really banner year for our library. With the support of the Rittenhouse Trust, LPPL has installed a memory lab in our branch in Vineland. We have an array of cutting-edge equipment that enables our residents to digitize all their old precious photographs, recordings, and films, and enhance and print old pictures. It's a really remarkable service, and it's really being well-used. With our partners in Grimsby and West Lincoln, and with the support of the Niagara Community Foundation, we launched the Babies First Book Initiative at West Lincoln Memorial Hospital. Now, every baby born at that hospital receives a new board book with early literacy information and an invitation to visit their local library. And we've extended this into Pelham so that residents can pick up their books and literacy information at either branch in Pelham. Our incredibly successful Books on the Bench fundraising series has hosted Kate Quinn, Jennifer Robson, Linwood Barcliffe, and Amanda Peters in 2024. These perennially sold-out author events have been held in partnership with Vienni Estates, Londonborn &amp; Fielding Estates Wineries, and have benefited from local sponsorship by the Jacob Chartwell Orchard Retirement Residence, Niagara Peninsula Energy, and Jared Brandon Realtor. A wonderful new initiative in Fenwick at our Maple Anchor Branch is the Migrant Workers' Hub. A partnership between several regional groups, it is improving the lives of many hardworking individuals in our community. As for collections, excuse me, in addition to the variety of cool items we loaned like Wi-Fi hotspots, ukuleles, and fishing kits, we've added Roku devices that are loaded with streaming services, memory care kits, and sensory kits for those with cognitive needs. Again, LPPL has benefited from the support of the Niagara Community Foundation. We can do so much more when we work together. Next slide, please. These are just some of the wonderful comments that the library receives on a regular basis. We pride ourselves on supporting the community and making our residents feel important, recognized, and understood. Next slide, please. There are four main drivers of the proposed budget for 2025 categorized between maintaining our existing core business and growth and service enhancements. We have base adjustments to personnel, including step adjustments, increased costs of benefits, and COLA. We are also faced with escalating supplier costs from inflationary pressures, for example, IT, software, courier postage, end-of-grant funding to cover our hotspot data charges, et cetera. As for growth and service enhancement, our new bookmobile service commences in early 2025. Some increased costs for collections, IT services, maintenance, and staffing are associated. And we are fundraising to try to mitigate some of these costs during the upcoming Giving Tuesday campaign. The 2025 operating and capital budgets aim to balance progress on the library's strategic plan, community growth, and against the fiscal pressures facing both the Town of Lincoln and the Town of Pelham. On the revenue side, the draft 2025 LPL operating budget increase is $86,122, which represents $49,951 for the Town of Lincoln and $36,171 for the Town of Pelham, 58% and 42%, respectively, as per the merger agreement we struck in 2022. Council may remember that in the previous two years, our increases have been very conservative, 2%, in fact, all while weathering both post-pandemic economic changes. Provincial funding remains static at its 30-year level. Room rentals and fines make up a small part of our revenue, and we have increased room rental fees slightly. Operational fundraising is campaign-based, and I just mentioned that our Giving Tuesday campaign for this year is for the bookmobile. Last year, we raised $20,000 during our Giving Tuesday campaign that enables us to offer free children and youth programming for three years. DC funds will be used to cover some costs of collections. Next slide, please. Expenditures remain consistent with 2024, with increases for staff salaries and COLA adjustments and materials and technology making up most of the change. Our staff are the batteries that make the library function, and their dedication to service and endless creativity ensure great results for our users. And you all have commented on our wonderful programs the last time we met, so I know you appreciate that. Regarding capital, I'd be mindful that we are anticipating support for our upcoming renovation project. Our ask is very reasonable, and it's for the most needed items for next year, our website, network, and phone system, and it's $15,000. Next slide, please. People in Lincoln and Pelham value their library and depend on the resources that we offer. The value we provide makes our towns culturally richer, socially more connected, and economically stronger. I want to thank you very much for your continued support of Lincoln Pelham Public Library, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Julie, for a detailed presentation. Again, it's so great to hear about all the programs that you and your staff continue to provide the town. The one program, Migrant Workers' Hub, I know I've driven through Fenwick many times in the evening, and that is getting used by the workers, that's for sure, and I'm sure they appreciate that many times over. I find that one program about the infants getting their books, I think that is a pretty cool program, that's for sure. And I don't know where you guys get the imagination to think of these programs, but it just goes to show that your staff is always thinking outside the box and looking towards to make, continue to make your library, our library, even more relevant in the community. So we appreciate that. I will now open to council any questions on the presentation, either programs or finances. Counselor Hildebrand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Julie, for a great presentation. Certainly appreciate all you do and the effort you put in, and your creativeness, like the mayor mentioned. I have a question with regards to expenses. There's a line item called telephone and internet services. I'd appreciate a further breakdown on that. The reason why I'm asking for that, you talk about hotspots and all this kind of stuff. Our town recently used Starlink as a creative solution because all the other major suppliers were considerably more expensive than Starlink. And Starlink has provided us with excellent service. Their speed is competitive with FIB, with any other major service. So I just want to make sure I get a breakdown of those costs and that you are investigating other suppliers other than just the traditional ones. Because originally, I would have never thought that Starlink would be a service provider to the town, but it is. And it's an effective one. It helps the remote areas where you can't get down, where the wires don't go down, all this kind of stuff. There's a satellite connection, so it's, I thought it was a very innovative, creative solution by our IT department. And I want to make sure you're investigating that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Julie. Thanks for that, Counselor Hildebrand. Any other questions, comments on the library? Counselor Olson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Duncan. Yes, Julie, I appreciate your leadership in the way this has come together for us. One has to consider the amalgamation of the two libraries to be a tremendous success. And I do, because I see the services that people are providing, and I see the number of new programs that you have and new services that we, we just don't fund the services that go on and on. We're always developing new things. And I think the difference between what you do and the way you do it is the welcome that people feel when they come in the door. And that creates a great sense of inclusion. I think the idea that your memory project is fantastic, because right now, the Historical Society is trying to get everything they can on digitized, and it's quite a chore if people could do it themselves for their families. That is fantastic. I thought you had a memory project, I think, and I wasn't sure the difference between the two of them there. There were two of them described on the screen, I think. Could you tell me what that is?
Certainly. Through you, Mayor Duncan, to the counselor. The memory lab that we have in the Vineland branch is something that is just new this year. So it has really incredible equipment, so you can digitize almost any type of film, or negative, or print, or video material. So, you know, we're really keen on that, on preserving the memories of our community. And those precious photographs and everything, and records of families, digitizing them is definitely what we need to do for the future. So that's a really important project that we're really proud of this year. It's something that we'd like to be able to move around our system eventually.
Thank you. And the other one was the memory care kits and sensory support. That's a different thing, I guess.
It is. So we have these wonderful kits that we put together, again, with funding from the Niagara Community Foundation, for which we're so thankful, to help those with cognitive impairment. So maybe people suffering from Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers can borrow these kits, and they're just filled with puzzles and games and books and different sensory support for people in the community. And we have quite a number of those kits, and people can borrow them and take them home.
And then finally, Mayor Duncan, if I could just comment on the new book reveal. I'm going to hate seeing the Old Tomato go, but I, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing that. And will you be visiting the, our retirement residents with that as well?
Through you, Mayor Duncan, to the counselor. We are working on our route right now as we speak, and planning all the places we'll go. And seniors' residences are definitely on our list. So we're just working out logistics and all of the things we need to do to get our route together.
And I know you'll be welcoming all those places, because I think this is a great service, too. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? I'll go to Counselor Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Julie. Good presentation. Just a quick question on revenues under the municipal grant section. I just wanted to be clear. So last year, the municipal grant was $2.13 million, and this year, you're looking for $2.239. So that's an increase of about $86,000. Forty-two percent of that from Pelham?
Yes.
Okay. And so, so that, the increase, then, when I look over there and I see 940, 452, that's with the increase, right? Is that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the next time you present before us, I want you to sing it like your namesake.
You can hear my voice is a little sketchy today, Counselor, but I will try.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Turning to Counselor Niznik.
Sorry. Good morning, Julie.
Good morning.
So just a question again about the $15,000. On the budget, it doesn't appear that, whoops, I lost it. Doesn't appear that the charges for telephone and internet have changed from last year. So why the addition of that 15?
Through you, Mayor Duncan, to the counselor. The $15,000 capital is for a new telephone system, so it's separate, it's a capital item separate from operating. It's, we actually need new phones.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Okay. I didn't realize it was a capital expense. That's fine. And then, as far as the internet service, that's connected in with, that's all controlled by Lincoln, correct?
Through you, Mayor Duncan, to the counselor. It is not controlled by Lincoln. So we have the benefit of RFP and contract negotiations, but we pay for that ourselves separately.
So Starlink may be something, an avenue, that you could investigate. That would be a great idea. Okay.
Certainly.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments? Back to Counselor Olson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Duncan. When you're talking about the provincial operating grant, how long has that been frozen at the same level?
Through you, Mayor Duncan, to the counselor. Thirty years-ish?
How many years?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty years.
Yeah.
Perhaps we should be making some representation to the province, I would imagine, as a council. That would probably be a good thing for us to be doing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Any, I don't see any other ques, oh, I see Counselor Niznik.
Yes, thank you. So just through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Counselor Olson. We did indeed send a letter to the province asking them to revisit that. So quite a few municipalities are asking for them to up that amount of operating cost contributions. So no word back from them yet.
Very good. Thank you for that, Counselor. Again, any other questions, comments? Not seeing any. I turn to the clerk. Again, Ms. Julie, thank you again for a great presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Duncan.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That brings us to the staff presentation. And I believe starting us off this morning is Mr. Suraj, the deputy treasurer.
Yep. Go ahead, sir. Thank you. Good morning, members of council. So we're here to present the 2025 operating budget. The agenda for the presentation is we'll start talking, start with talking about a bit of a snapshot of the community, staffing summary for 2025, economic impact on the 2025 budget. Then we'll get into the operating expenditures and revenue as presented to you in the draft budget, followed by the Meridian Community Center focus. We just heard from the library, so we'll skip past that. And then we'll look at the summary of 2025 increases, which will bring us to the proposed tax levy increase, as well as the budget decision items. So there are additional items that have been brought to our attention since the presentation of the draft budget, so we'll talk about that. So this year for the budget document, we started the document off with a bit of a community profiled. You know, you're all great representatives of this great community, but we figured it would be helpful for, you know, any new residents or anybody else that might be reading a budget document. So the average household assessed value in the community is about $377,000. This is something that we get from NPAC. The population, as you all know, is just under 19,000. The average household income is about $152,000, just a little over, one of the highest in the region. And the last one, I think, is also important, the land area and the population density. So we're right in the middle of the pack in terms of the land area, but the population density, we're more on the lower end. So that has an impact on how we deliver services, how geographically spread out you are. So I think that was an important stat to note. Looking at the staffing summary, I know this is something that council has wished to see in the past, so we've included on the budget document this year. So you notice that they are done based on FTE, so, or FTE or full-time equivalent. So essentially, all it means is you look at the hours for a normal full-time position, and you compare each position in relation to those hours. So if somebody's working half the hours of a regular position, they would be considered half an FTE. Obviously, you can't have half a person, so it's not done on a head count, it's done on an FTE basis. So looking at the totals, if you look at 2024, the town's total FTE count for both full-time and part-time was about 102.55. And if you look over to a couple columns over to the right, for 2025, that number's going up to 106.95. So the net increase is 4.4 FTEs. And I can talk a little bit about that. So if you're just looking in that variance column, starting from the top, the first increase that you notice there is 0.4 in people services and marketing. So that is something that's proposed in the draft budget in front of you for consideration. It is increasing a part-time FTE to a full-time FTE. So you have 0.6. We're adding the additional 0.4 to make it a full-time. The next one is in the clerk's office, and there's a note tied to it. So that is, again, in front of you for consideration in the draft budget for the new records and licensing clerk position. Now, even though it shows as one FTE, the real impact, if approved, would really only be about 0.25 of an FTE for 2025, because the note states that we're, you know, proposing to start that off October 1st as opposed to January 1st. The next one is fire and bylaw. So there isn't really an increase in FTE, per se. It's just more relates to the hours, increased hours for crossing guards, just based on trending and demand and what's required. So as I mentioned, FTE would go up if we have more hours budgeted for crossing guards. Public Works is the new environmental compliance position that was approved by council in 2024. So that is something that is already approved. We're just catching it up and including it in the 2025 budget. And similarly, for recreation, culture, and wellness, there is 1.57 FTEs. You all recall, there was a report from KPMG regarding staffing levels, and as a result, some decisions were made to increase staffing at the MCC. So that includes the position for the new RCW manager, as well as some changes to customer service positions. Those ones are also approved in 2024, and we're just updating the budget to catch them up. So let's look at the economic impact that we have factored into the 2025 budget. So every year, when we present the budget, we look at the economic outlook and, you know, what kind of factors will impact how we deliver services. So the first item on there is inflation. As you may recall, or as you may know, inflation has come down significantly from its peak a number of years, a couple of years ago. So even though CPI is at 2%, we still continue to see inflation as a big challenge for the town. And the main reason for that is inflation is always quoted at the CPI or the Consumer Price Index. However, the goods and services that a municipality typically purchases is not very similar to an average household. So we have construction costs, maintenance costs, all those costs are typically going up 5% to 7% as opposed to the 2%. So you may, you know, hear the comment, well, CPI is 2%, how come your budget's higher? Well, that's one of the reasons why. Minimum wage has gone up by 3.9% as of October 2024. We've seen increased costs in staffing due to QP collective agreement, salary grid movements, and for the town to elect to be a cost-of-living wage employer. Increased costs of benefits such as CPP, EI, and health benefits, which are approximately 10% year over year. And then, you know, just other challenges that sometimes are hard to quantify. You know, we have labor shortages that can sometimes lead to longer vacancies and challenges with retention. And then the last item is the ongoing challenge of climate change as we see, you know, more stronger storms. So if we have one of those, it increases the cost of storm cleanup, winter cleanup. So those are also things we need to consider as we prepare the budget. So the next few slides, we are going to look at some of the comparators from the BMA's annual municipal studies. So as a refresher, BMA Management Consulting is a firm that does great comparator studies, over 500 pages. They look at over 100 municipalities, I think, maybe close to 200 municipalities in Ontario, look at a lot of different things. And we were able to get the 2024 draft study and figures just in time for the presentation. So I'm glad to have included the most recent numbers. As I mentioned in the very first slide, our town's average household income for 2024 is just under $153,000. And as you can see from the comparison, it is, in fact, the highest in Niagara region. The average for Niagara region is about 106, just under $117,000. The study also looks at the property tax burden for a typical household and compares it to the average household income. So in this first table over there, Pelham was in the mid category. So the average residential taxes for average property that they studied was 5822. Divide that by the average household income, that gives you about 3.8%, and which falls within the mid category. So they've got three categories, low, mid, or high. And this is for, across all the municipalities at this study. The next box looks at the total municipal burden. So that's looking at not just property taxes, but also the So that's looking at not just property taxes, but also the water and wastewater bill for a typical household. And when we do that comparison, the total municipal burden for the town was about, just about 7,000, 7,017. So on a dollar basis, it is in the high category. However, if you look at it as a percentage of household income, we fall within the mid-category again. And then lastly, I've got some figures there from Niagara region as a whole. So as you can see, the dollar amount for the Niagara as a whole for total household burden is about 6,129 compared to our 7,017. However, if you compare it on a percentage of, you know, the ability to pay, so to speak, on an average basis, it's 5.3 average for Niagara, and we're a little bit lower than that at 4.6. Next, we looked at the residential comparisons for two common property types, a two-story home or a single detached bungalow. So for a two-story home, the average property tax bill would have been 57.21 for the town of Pelham, which is in the high category, so I'm talking about the table on the left, so which is in the high category. However, you can see you're kind of more closer to the middle of the pack as opposed to towards the bottom. So 57.21, and then the Niagara average was 57.94. So we're just a little bit below the average and a bit below the median as well, which was 6,024. Now, looking at the right-hand side, looking at detached bungalows, we are on the mid-category and, again, closer to the top end of the mid-category. Niagara average is 43.81. We were at about 41.12 and still below the mean, which is 4,300. So just to kind of give some comparisons of how we stack up against our neighboring municipalities. So looking at property taxes and some of the factors that impact what a property or a resident will pay in property taxes, I think I've broken down to like three main things. So number one, obviously, is the assessment value of the property, which is determined by MPAC. Town has no control over that. The 2016 assessed value was the last time MPAC sort of did an update, you know, as a result of the pandemic. They've, they're usually on a four-year cycle, but we haven't seen an update since 2026, oh, sorry, 2016. So essentially, the tax rate is the primary driver of the property tax paid in 2024 and will be in 2025. The next category or next item that has an impact is the tax rate. So the town is responsible for setting its own tax rate based on the budgeted revenue needs and the weighted assessments. We'll talk a little bit about assessments in the next point. But then the total property tax bill for a resident not only encompasses the taxes paid to Pelham, but to other levels of government, i.e. the region and the province for the education piece. So we have, again, no control over what the region sets their taxes or the province for the education board. And lastly, the property classes also has a big impact. So Pelham is primarily residential, so 89% of our property classes fall within the single residential, which has one of the lowest taxes when you look at the tax rate and the tax ratios. So it puts more of a burden on the residential base. So just as an example, and actually to further that point, we're about 89% residential and about 5% farm and only less than 5% commercial industrial. Typically speaking, your commercial industrial properties would pay much higher taxes as compared to residential, so it puts less of the burden on the residential base. So that's why it's, you know, one of the, I don't want to say one of the challenges, it's, it's just the composition for a community of how, you know, how our community is built. And so that's what happens on property taxes. So just by comparison, when you talk about a city like Niagara Falls, they're about only 2/3 on residential. A third of it is, you know, commercial. So for them, a similar property with a similar assessed value in Pelham versus Niagara, you'll see, you know, significantly less property taxes in Niagara versus Pelham. And that's not, you know, to say where our budget is inefficient or we're doing things. You know, we may be adding great values just the way our property classes are. That's how the taxes are impacted. And then the last thing I want to point out on this slide before we move on is just on a per-dollar basis. So at the bottom pie chart there, for every dollar that we collect, we only keep about 40 cents and we provide all the services that, you know, we have included in the budget. And the rest of it goes to the Niagara region for different things that they do and as well as the education tax, which is about 11%. Okay, and I will pass it on to Teresa to, oh, yeah, if you have any questions on this side of the presentation, I'm happy to.
Any questions on the presentation so far? Councillor Olson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Junkin. On your page 17, that was the one with the, that showed the money we've spent for climate change and winter operations. Now, I think if we look at all the, what's going ahead, like, that's the biggest risk we have from the environment is weather, probably. I think I've checked with the chief a couple of times and heard him present that. Now we have, now we have the new equipment that we're buying next year. Are they all staffed now completely with, with people to drive them, make sure they're operating? Maybe I'm asking Ryan Cook.
To Mr. Cook, please.
Yeah, currently, our fleet of snowplows are fully staffed with roads operators. We do have one for growth coming in, I forget when it is, 2025, I believe. That will actually be the seat for our six roads operator.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions so far on the presentation? Not seeing any? I guess one question, one number that and kind of a material to the rest of the presentation. But the average in the Niagara region being 116,000, I thought that was, I thought at the Niagara region, when we discussed that, that the average wage income in Niagara region was 68,000 or 70,000. But obviously, I realized staff didn't come up with the 116, but it just seems, it just seems high.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so, okay, yeah, excellent. There you go. Thank you. Yes, yes. Thank you. Councillor Olson?
Thank you, Mayor Junkin. I was going to ask you about the, the role of inflation in our budget here. I think you mentioned CPI at 2%. Well, we're, we're kind of entering a different age here with the different things that are going on around us in the environment. I think there's a, I think there's a bigger risk of that because our currency's about to be devalued. That's going to lead to more and more inflation. And the interest rates are going to go up again, and we're going to be faced with higher costs and less building. Any comments on that? Have we, have we made enough accommodation for that kind of thing happening? Do you think?
Mr. CEO, perhaps? Hello?
Yeah, thank you for the question, councillor Olson. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So obviously, we understand that inflation continues to be a challenge. So this is something we definitely address year after year. We try to look for alternate revenue sources so the burden doesn't fall on property taxes. So if we notice that our costs are increasing with inflation for wherever possible, whatever revenue generating services that we have, we do try to match those increases in the revenue as to offset that as much as possible. But I think, you know, you have it right on. It's something we're going to have to monitor very closely and see what we can do.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I guess the answer to that is to keep our costs under control and managed. The second question I had is, what is the impact of the MPAC not, not providing updated assessments since 2016?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a big concern because when the assessments do happen, I think what we're going to see, from what I'm hearing, is shifts to maybe someone that has a lower house, someone that has a low assessment value. I think that's where it's going to go up significantly. So that, that's where the shift is, and I think this is probably one of the reasons why the province is still looking at that and how to address that. I don't know if CEO wants to add to that?
Mr. CEO?
It is going to be a huge challenge, but one, it's entirely in provincial control, and two, understand that it's also going to deal with a growing inequity in our society. If you own a million-dollar home that's brand new, I don't know, you're probably paying 10,000 in property tax. If you own a million-dollar home that's 50 years old, you're probably paying 4. And so with, it's, when that ultimately gets reassessed, it isn't going to increase taxes across the board. If we take 23 million a year in property tax, we're still going to take 23 million. It's just going to adjust within the residential class. And so we have some residents who are paying, again, the municipality doesn't control that, Ontario does. But for the, a house of the exact same value, someone pays half as much as the other. And what it's going to do is ultimately, the house that pays less is going to come up, and the house that's paying more is actually going to come down. It's highly discriminatory towards new homes, and it's highly in the favor of pre-existing homes. And so, but from the municipality's perspective, you set, we bring you a budget. We say we need X dollars to run the community. At the end of the day, you approve whatever the X dollars is. And then we take that much by dividing it amongst all of the properties and their different categories and their different number of homes. So the more homes you have, the lower the number, you know, the greater the denominator. But it's Ontario ultimately that sets the, so we set the mill rate, but they decide overall the valuations. And when the valuation, so there'll just be movement within categories. And some of our residents will end up paying more and others will pay less. We'll still take the exact same amount of money. It just, the question is house one versus house two. If you have two homes side by each, I guarantee you the newer home pays more in taxes than the older home. And that's a challenge for Ontario. The problem is it makes itself worse. Every year, it doesn't fix it. In the time we've been, we, between last council and this council, Ontario hasn't adjusted it one inch, one iota. We're still based on 16, and it's, we're late 24 now. So, you know, if they punt again, at any rate, they're creating innate unfairness, a dramatic difference. But that doesn't actually impact our budget because we still take X, you decide the X, we take X dollars every year. And then that's, Ontario impacts how, which house pays how much. So that's the, that's the system, unfortunately.
Thank you for that. That's, that's another risk that I have to keep in mind when I think about a budget. And, but it will affect us when we, when it comes to regional costs that are allocated according to assessed values, I would imagine. I expect ours is going to be, going to go up, but it's not going to be a, it'd be a marginal amount, but it will impact us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Any other questions? I think we're good. Thank you. Welcome to the director.
Thank you, yes. I'm going to start off with the operating revenues. And so in your, in your binder, what we have here is we have the 2024 approved budget and the 2025 draft budget. In a few slides, I'm going to go through the, what, the change from 2024 to 2025. So I'm not going to go in detail on these slides, just, just wanted to show that the increase from 2024, the revenues were 23 point, almost 24 million, and now it's going to be almost 26 million for the revenues. And obviously, the biggest increase is the, the tax revenue. And, and then the major revenues, where it comes from, obviously, it's the tax revenues. So this is the tax operating budget. We will bring forward the water and wastewater budget in January. So that's a slide there. There is the graph there that actually shows in a pie chart where all the different revenue sources are. And obviously, the biggest one is the tax revenue. And the operating expenses, the biggest, one of the largest increases are, do relate to some of the salary increases and other transfers to reserves, but we'll go through that in detail. Let's see here. And the biggest expenses that we have, obviously, are salaries. Salaries, benefits, transfer to reserves, and materials, supplies, and contracted services are some of the higher expenses. You'll see that, let's see, the, okay, I'm going to go down here. And here's the pie graph, which you have in your binder. I just want to go to the next slide, the MCC. So with the MCC, we have an increase in revenue. And that has been based on the experience and also on increase in some of the revenue fees. And what's nice about the MCC here, this is the net surplus before debt and other items. The budget in 2024 was 1.9 million, and in 2025 is just under 2 million. So the increase is only about 63,000, which for a budget, the size is minimal. And in total, after we look at the debt that relates to the MCC, it's actually almost a break-even budget. And that's very significant considering we have some new positions in there. And, and this, the offset of the increases has been the increase in revenue, which is something that, that the RCW has been working towards with regards to new programs. We've seen the operating budget from the library, and this is the slide I wanted to spend some time on. So on this slide here, what's nice about this slide is that it actually shows in detail exactly where the increases are. And just to highlight a few of them, there were some new positions that were approved last year by council. And the impact to the tax levy is 1.42%. We had some other increases with the volunteer firefighter points. I just want to mention with regards to the volunteer firefighters, actually, in the BMA study, Pelham is one of the lowest municipalities for fire services. So even though our firefighter points have gone up, it's actually significantly lower than a lot of other municipalities, which is, you know, just a testament to the great work that's done by the fire department. And we have in this line here, the part-time to full-time position for, for the people services, the clerk position, and then there's the clerk position as well. The minimum wage increase, cost of living, and the grid movement, these are things that, it's out of our control. So even though you see it there, you know, looking at this budget, a lot of these things are already built in. And that's the challenge that we had when we were doing this budget. We really wanted to do, we didn't want, we really wanted to keep the expenses as low as possible. But then you get, you know, like green shield expenses of almost $73,000. Let's see here. Software licenses, there's a new few, new softwares that we have, and that's about an $87,000 increase. And then we have increases in our contracts, and that's about $95,000. But when you look at it, it's only 0.49% of the tax levy. Increases in programming events for RCW, but that's more than offset by the increases in the revenue that we have in the budget. And we'll see the, the fleet repairs, as some of the vehicles get really old, our fleet repairs budget has gone up. And, but as we start to acquire new vehicles, then that number will go down. Materials and supplies, that's, that's just going up by inflation. So the other key number is the increase to the reserve transfer. So the reserve transfer is critical because that's how we fund our capital projects. So we have a 1.94% increase to the reserves. But we also moved some of the capital items that we normally had in capital to the operating budget. For example, engineering fees and other line items, equipment and fleet rentals. And that decreased the amount that we transferred from reserves. So the net amount from the reserves is, is about 1.31%. We had a decrease in debt payments. As the debt become, as the debentures mature, they come off of the schedule. But because we have a new debt repayment reserve, that money is transferred to the reserve. And that's how we start, we're starting to build up our reserve. The other key item here is the increase in RCW revenues of almost 285,000. And that really has helped with the tax levy increase by decreasing at 1.47%. And that really has helped with the tax levy increase by decreasing at 1.47%. So that's pretty significant. So in total, the 2025 budget increase is 7.39%. The assessment growth at the time that we published the budget was 1.58%. And the net the net tax levy increase is 5.81%. So this is what you have in your budget. But we have some good news. So so this slide here, it's kind of hard to read here, but you have on your binder, this is what breaks out the 5.81%. So 1.31%, as we mentioned, is the net amount of the reserve to transfer the transfer reserves for capital. Council approved staffing changes prior to the budget is about 2.54%. And then the 1.96% is just the net increase of the whole operating budget. So if you break it out that way, it's not a large number. And this slide here just shows you what the 500 the 5.81% equals in in an increase to a tax person, and it's $134 a year. That's what 5.81%. And that's the challenge that we have because everyone's always focused on the percentage. But when you actually look at the dollar amount in a year's time on your taxes, it's not as significant if you look at it that way. So this is the budget decision items. So this is where we take the the current tax levy increase as presented in the budget. And these are some of the budget decision items. One, we have the good news that our tax growth is actually at 2.09, not 1.58%. That's the final number. So that is tremendous news because I know that some of the other municipalities are struggling even to reach 1%. So we've we did we did a happy dance, didn't we, David? When we saw the 2.09%. So that gave us an additional almost $100,000 of of an offset to the tax levy increase. Council approved cemetery revenues at the November 20 meeting of about 42,300. This is the increase to the cemetery rates. There was additional RCW revenues of $30,000. Council approved $5,000 for membership to Byline Research and Innovation Center at the November 20 meeting. There was additional dollars for the bylaw enforcement of $10,000. And then one of the items that we heard from the finance and audit committee meeting was about the about deferring the records and licensing clerk position to look at it in 2026. So we put that on the table. And that actually has brought the rate down from 5.81% to 4.84%. And I know that the Palom Finance and Audit Committee was hoping that the number would be below five. So this is where we're at. So I don't know if anybody has any comments on that on these items here? Do you agree with what we have here?
Any questions, comments? I'll go to Deputy Mayor Wink.
Yes, just a general comment. I appreciate all the work that you you put into this, particularly after the Finance and Audit Committee looked at this and suggested that we wanted something lower than the 5.8. You've done a lot of work on this and came up with some creative solutions to get us to 4.8. And I certainly appreciate all the effort that that your department's put into this. And, you know, 4.8 is still a lot, but when you look at Niagara on the Lake, and I believe they're over 10%, this is any increase isn't a great news story, but this is a good news story that that we are able to come in below 5%. So thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wink. Any other comments? I see you have councillor Olson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Junkin. Yes, I think this is my fifth budget now. And I've seen the development of what we've been doing and the engagement we have in the community and the increase in the in the climate change. And I would regard the first few budgets as as more pragmatic and opportunistic than this has because we relied on a lot on grants and things. And now this budget becomes much more strategic and intentional. I think that'll be that'll serve us very well in the future. And I feel like we've given this we've got an excellent staff, we got a superior staff. And I think we've given them the tools to get the job done, including the the vehicles and things that we've given to Public Works and the direction that we have. And we've been the dividend for ratepayers has been we've been rewarded for better services, much more creative services. So I think this is this is a great budget and I'm very much in support of this. I think this is this is about the the best budget we can have for these times that we're facing. So I'm all in favor of Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Olson, for those comments. Any other comments? I'll go to councillor Nesnik.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question with regards to the increase in staff for people services and marketing. So can you just remind me, had we already discussed that and approved that, the 0.4 increase from part time to full time? Or is that a news?
That's part of this budget process, yes.
That's new as well? So just wondering if maybe somebody can comment on justification for that increase.
To the CAO.
The 0.4 that your people services slash human resources department is 1.6 people. So it's one full time and one part time. So we although you have received reports put that in the past, the goal is to move to be a department of 2.0, i.e. two full time positions. We have the leanest, meanest, and I would say pound for pound, most productive people services, human resources, and health and safety is in there too, which is not in we're oh, and I can inform you that we received notification this week from WSIB that we are yet again going to receive a refund for another clean year. And so health and safety deserves some shout out for that.
Good for them.
So we will be receiving monies and we get it in 2025. You don't get it this calendar year for the good work we've done over the last year, but we do get it. And I actually think it's entirely appropriate that that goes towards the health and safety staffing component. That's the reaping the rewards of a lot of effort of a lot of health and safety committee and a lot of people donate their well, donate is the wrong word, but put in a lot of time. In any event, at 2.0, we'll still, other than Wayne Fleet, have the smallest department in Niagara. And this is really needed quite a lot. It's you know, every year, there's a hill. I always say there's a hill I need to die on somewhere. This is the hill in for for next year. Or it's very hard to function at 1.6 with the hugely successful gamut of services we offer out of that very tiny area. And to the point where we get refunds on our WSIB corporate premiums. And that's attribute primarily attributable to that 1.6 people. That's that's the expenditure.
Great. Okay. So thank you very much. That sounds like that's been well justified. Thank you. And just a couple of comments, just positive comments. I wanted to publicly congratulate again the town for fully paying off the demand loan in 2020 December 2023. And that our net debt has decreased from 10.5 million to 9.9 million. So thank you very much. And as well, Palom's projected debt as a percentage of own source revenue is projected to be 10.77%, which is down from 13.5%. So that, to me, is huge and showing that, you know, you're really being very diligent and purposeful in all of the decisions that are being made, both from you folks as well as maybe the audit finance committee in hand in hand. So congratulations.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments? I'll go to councillor Hildebrand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for an excellent presentation, and I appreciate being below 5%. I got a question for you, though. I looked at the natural gas bills, and it looked as though the natural gas bills went up less than the actual carbon tax increase that we had on April the 1st. So I know I'm optimistic and we're working all kinds of things, but I'm not sure how we're going to accomplish that.
Any comment from the clerk?
Yeah, I think like the increase that that we used in the budget for the gas, I think it was 5%. And councillor Hildebrand, I talked about that with you, what rate use. Yeah, so I think that we should be fine with the 5%.
councillor Hildebrand?
It's it's just amazing that that carbon tax eats up just about all that 5% or as much as. It's just a and not only that, they had a carbon tax, and then they added an extra tax on that tax. So everything gets taxed on that. I just wanted to clarify one thing with regards to the electricity bills. When I when I talk about the yearly electricity bills that we look at as the U.S. committee, it includes all the taxes. And the town gets the taxes back. So when I reported, we used up to the end of September, our hydro bill was 402,000. And I said, we're going to have an average bill for the year of about 350. The difference is the tax. So it's, you know, it's how we look at things. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Hildebrand. Any other questions, comments? I'll go to councillor Olson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Junkin. And one one other thing I wanted to add is the our treasurer's been wisely advocating for an increase to our capital, our capital reserves. And she always said something more in the order of 2%, I think. She told me several times. So thank you for your leadership in that and and making sure that this is here because this is this is a great great step, I think, in in our budgeting process and our intentions for what we're going to do in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to just this slide here just shows what the 4.84, it equals what $111 of an increase for the average assessment household. So that's decreased from 134, which which is still a decrease. I just want to end the the operating budget presentation and just acknowledge just the the wonderful staff and budget holders at the town. I mean, it's not I always say I'm the messenger, so that's my job. But it's, you know, it's all the people that actually go out and buy things and procure things and are really careful with the spending. And that's that's all the managers and the senior team. And I just wanted just to thank them. And when we do this budget, we literally look at every single line. Like it's, you know, we spend the time and we, you know, we work together to say, are you sure you need that much? Can you know, where can we save? What can we do better? What do you need? And it's those conversations between finance and the team that I think, you know, has really helped us to bring a very tight budget. And when I hear the other numbers from the other municipalities, what they're coming in, I'm really proud of our 4.84%. So I just wanted just to end on those comments.
Thank you, Director of Finance. Kevin, Mr. Kerr, councillor Kerr coming in from the east. I don't have a very big picture of you on the screen. And have you had any comments or are you okay?
Everything's fine, Mayor. The questions have been good and I appreciate the answers.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Nesnik, did I see one last hand?
Yes, yes, but thank you very much. So once again, I think my other one question I had, but I was I figured it out on my own head that I was wrong in asking that question, so I won't ask it. But this one, those so on page 28, finance services, the draft budget says that there's a surplus, I think, of 227,000. Or is that a? That's in the binder, my binder. So it looks like you're saving 37% in finance services.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, what we have here on this budget, we have finance has both revenues and expenditures. So what that $227,000 shows is that that's the net levy requirement, what I need from the taxes to, let's say, to fund my department. Because my revenue is no, yeah, actually, oh, no, that's right. No, this is a surplus. Yeah, sorry. The revenue is 1.3 expenses are a million, and we actually have our department is contributing to help with the other departments that don't have revenue of 227,000. So for example, the council, the department for council has no revenue. So where is the money coming from to help pay for that department? Part of it is coming from the contribution from the revenue from the finance area, and it's coming from different areas.
Okay, so you kind of it it washes all out in the kind of laundry once you get it all finished. Okay.
So yeah, so this budget, because it has a revenue source, it's showing a surplus, and then the other budgets don't have revenue, and they're just showing that they need the money from the tax levy. It's just how the budget's presented.
Okay, yeah, I'm still kind of learning that, so that's great. Thank you then. I just wondered if we could put that in reserves, but obviously you've allocated it to other departments, so that's fair. And then just last question on page 43, the street lighting. So the budget change you've asked for 130,000 in the draft budget. So just wondering, I thought we were hoping to reduce the costs of street lighting through the LED installs.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So with regards to that, I think if you look at the 2023 actual, it's almost 190,000. The budget that we had for 2024, I think it was just a little bit low. And so the 80,000 is probably a more realistic number, but it's still almost $110,000 less than 2023 actual.
True.
So that's so last the 2024 budget was a bit optimistic.
Okay, thank you very much. Makes sense, yep.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Any other comments, questions on the operating budget?
Oh, councillor.
I'll go to councillor Hildebrand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like just to comment on the optimistic part of it. I'm hoping when we get the report back from our contractor, we're able to turn that optimism into reality.
Yep.
For us. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hildebrand.
We hope that too.
Excellent. I see no other comments or questions. I would just like to again say that, yes, I'm fully supportive of this budget, this council. This is my second term on as mayor, as many of these councillors are. We've joined with staff over the last six years to keep the nose to the grindstone and keep our debt levels from going any higher. We and council has had full support of our town staff to follow that path, and we're very, very grateful for that. And I know there's innovation innovative thinking in the public works. RCW continues with more programs and also fantastic running of our biggest facility. Really appreciative of that. And I guess in a way, while I'm proud that no one on council, because I must say, I was toying with the idea of possibly not putting quite as much in reserves, lowering the rate a little more. No other no councillor suggested that. And and I think that's a great idea because it's a great budget as it is. And if we can continue to build reserves, as councillor, Deputy Mayor Wink and I have had private conversations, at a very slow rate, but they are going in the right direction. And and yeah, the fact that so much of the town has improved in the last four or five years, roads, debt situations and what have you. Again, thank you to the staff for innovative thinking and then thank council for keeping our request for services within within the ballpark. So again, thank you to the director. To the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I do understand correctly, council would be interested in potentially adopting the recommended changes by staff that were presented on slide 29. So if that is the case, I would be looking for a motion to accept these changes, which would reduce the tax levy increase to 4.84%.
Councillor Olson?
Thank you.
Seconder, councillor Deputy Mayor Wink.
Thank you, and to you, Mr. Mayor, for a vote.
Okay, any questions, any further questions? Not seen. Not seeing any? Call a vote, all those in favor. I seen unopposed. Motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while we're still in committee input, if there are any additional recommendations by council, now would be the time to bring them forward.
Okay, thank you. Council Olson.
Yes, a question, Mr. Mayor, thank you, to the CAO. Is there any, any thought being given or any possibility of doing a multiple-year budget so that we could, we could, you know, not necessarily approve for three years, but approve an annual budget and have, have something of a forecast for the years two or three or year two?
To the CAO.
I sincerely, with every fiber of my being, hope not. But at the end of the day, if that's the direction of council, that we will comply. Early next year, you're gonna work on some, look at the strategic plan and see if there are any updates or amendments you want to make to it. And if at that point in time, that's a, a product you would like from us, then we will proceed with that. But I just want to take the chance to say how strongly opposed I am to that. And that is, we create a terrible system of expectations. And you end up with three times the stories about tax increases that only actually happen once. So you say, well, we're gonna raise taxes 3, 3, 3, 3, or something. And then you get to the year, and you still have to do the entire budget process. You start off assuming it's three, and you find you can't actually live within three. So then we're, it's fight, like, you get twice the bad press, and they're all guesses anyway. And I've had the pleasure of being your CAO for five years, four months and change. And in that time, didn't see COVID coming. That annihilated several of our budgets and every assumption. Didn't see the property market falling off because, you know, whether that was inflation or COVID or whatever, lots of people attribute different things. Growth dropped off. Didn't see this, didn't see Trump getting reelected. Don't know what that's gonna do to our current, like, so like budgeting two and three years ahead. In the, I've, I've been here for six budgets now. I know this one isn't done, but if you give me that credit, this is my sixth. You know, if we could be the guesses two, three years ago, they would have been laughably wrong. So, but that is a tool that other municipalities find it wise to engage in. I just, I just think it, it's unfortunate because we have to be reactionary to what our community needs. And, and if our community decides it needs far less or far more tax increase or more service or less, you sort of, it's, you just put handcuffs on yourself as elected officials. And I, I want you to always be in the driver's seat and able to react to the needs of the here and now, whatever those are in the future. But that being said, yes, we can, and if that is the will of council, then we, we will do it.
Yes, we can, but no, we shouldn't. Is that to the Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor Junkin. I ask a question, and I'm taking that as a strong no. That's a, so I appreciate that. It's just a philosophical question, and I think, I think I'm in agreement, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Are we in the middle of calling a vote?
No, we're not. I just, we just opened the floor if there's any other changes.
Got sidetracked by, by this debate. To the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That does conclude the committee portion. That brings us to our final recommendation, moved by Counselor Olson. That committee received the presentation from the CEO of the Lincoln Pelham Public Library for information, and that committee received the presentation from the Treasurer and the Deputy Treasurer for information. And that committee recommend to council to approve the budget as amended at their regular meeting scheduled for December 4th, 2024. To you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Not seeing any? Call the vote, all those in favor? Seen unopposed, motion carries.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That brings us to adjournment, and I have a motion put forth by Counselor Eckert that this special meeting of committee be adjourned. To you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, all those in favor. Seen unopposed, meeting is adjourned.